Usually the mayor convenes our meetings because Mrs. Kennedy has asked me to give him a moment before the meeting begins.
Thank you. I was at an event and I thought it was so good, I wanted to share it with you. I did want to tell you, well, he answered my call and did. So, let's see, I hope this works. I was at the Mullen concert and these fifth graders were so terrific. I said, "Let's see if we can, I can share the moment with them."
Hi, everyone. Welcome to our surprise concert. I hope this brings a smile to the holiday season. I know it's a busy evening. These are the fourth and fifth grade after-school chorus. Not anything that has been done before. We've decided to try this out. We did an eight-week program. This is Allison Ballantyne. My name is Gina McKeown. We both have four children. They're all different ages. Allison's four, start in high school, and my youngest is not even in preschool yet. We have come together with these children. They have volunteered their time. Some of them have been with us twice a week. Some of them have only been with us once a week, which means they've had, with holidays and everything else, maybe four to five hours with us. We've given a concert to the parents, and now this week we'll be giving a concert to the entire Mullen school on Thursday. So this is a great way for them to warm up and practice. We would like to see chorus be brought back into the curriculum at some point for these age groups. They have an option for band right now, but they do not have a vocal performing option right now in the classroom. So this is a chance for them to sing. So we have two songs this evening. We're going to be starting with "Yonder Come Day." Our second song this evening is more of a holiday flavor. We'll be doing sleigh ride for you. So bear with us as we make do with space here. That's what happens when you give a surprise concert. It's a surprise to me, how the setup.
Just hear those sleigh bells jingling, jingling, jingling too. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. Outside the snow is falling and friends are calling you. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. Giddyup, 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 let's go. Let's look at the show. We're riding in Wonderland of Snow. Giddyup, 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 it's grand, just hold your hands. We're riding along with the song of a merry, pretty fairy. Letting hushings are nice and rosy and comfy, cozy are we. We're snuggled up together like we were never ever would be. Let's sing that rosy forest and sing a chorus or two. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. There's a birthday party at the home of Farmer Gray. It'll be the perfect ending of a perfect day. We'll be singing the songs we love to sing without a single stop. At the fireplace while we watch the chestnuts pop. Pop, 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 there's a happy feeling, nothing in the world can buy. Let me pass around the coffee and the pumpkin pie. And it looks pretty like a picture print by Gurbier and I. These wonderful things are the things we remember all through our lives. Just hear those sleigh bells jingling, jingling, jingling too. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you. Outside the snow is falling and friends are calling you. Come on, it's lovely weather for a sleigh ride together with you.
Okay. Good evening. And I'd like to call the order. To order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, December 19th, 2011. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. DeCanta?
Here.
Mr. Keel?
Present.
Thank you. Would we all please rise for a sense of pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools. The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every child. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help to achieve this mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration, support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity.
Thank you. Before I open for our first period of public comment, I would like to make a public comment, and that is to note that this is the last meeting for Stephanie Weaver as a member of the school committee. Ms. Weaver has been a diligent attendee. I think that she has made personally me a better school committee member, and added a great, great deal to our conversations, our dialogue, and to the schools. And as has been our tradition over the last several years, we have a gift for Stephanie, and I would like to present that right now on behalf of all of us. It's a book by David McPhail, a former neighbor of mine, who has written over 200 books, and it's called "Momma's Right Here." The book is signed by David. And while your children may be a little bit old for it, I would also like to present you this picture, although we're not going to give it to you. If you will notice, this is the actual picture that occurs on the back of the book. And it has a little plaque on it, and it says, "Stephanie Weaver, Newburyport School Committee, 2008-2012, for your service, thanks." And I'm going to hand this off to the superintendent, because this is going to be hanging in your present here in the library.
I just want to say thank you. I moved into this community about, just about 11 years ago, and have met some of the most wonderful people. I want to thank my friends and neighbors, and specifically all of their children who inspired me to come out and run for, I know some of you think I'm crazy for running for school committee, but for running for school committee. And I want to thank every school committee member before me that helped teach me how to be a better member, specifically Gordy Bechtel and Dean Hooper. Want to extend my thanks to Dr. Lyons for his help, and to Deirdre, Angela, and Karen. And I want to thank John Moke as well, because he was very influential the first two years in helping out. And I want to thank each and every one of the people on this current committee. Dr. Kerbel, it's, one of the highlights of serving has been bringing you to this district. I wish you the very best, and I will always be at your beck and call. And Mayor Holliday, thank you for everything you do for this community for education. I will stand behind you 100%. And to all of you, I wish you the best, and I will be in the back there occasionally. And last but not least, Dr. Orlando, if you're not here, I would like you to remove my email address, and I will send you Audrey's. And thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve the community. And she's going to help with the school building, too.
And again, before we take public comment, I would note this is my last meeting as the vice chair of the school committee, and it has been an honor and a privilege to both serve with these people and the community, and also the highlights of my experience here in Newport. And I look forward to moving back to a side of the table where I can be a little more obnoxious, abrasive, and raise the issues. But I really appreciate the support, and very grateful. We now have a period of public comment. We do have a packed agenda tonight, lots of interesting presentations. If anybody in the audience has any public comment they would like to add, please stand, offer your name for Mrs. Kennedy, and share what you would like to share.
Steph Tremblio. I am here to hear the presentation on the special ad hoc. I was part of that, and I just wanted to let you know that it was a wonderful experience. Some of the things that I think go above and beyond the presentation that you'll hear is the transparency. You know, you budget people, that the participants were able to see, with the parents and the student, or the parents and the teachers and the administration coming together to look at different aspects of the special education system. I think it was a great experience, and I hope that it'll continue on, I hope to see it again, passing. Thank you.
Any other additional public comments? There's another opportunity later on. Hearing none, we move to the consent agenda. Do we have any warrants?
Yes. I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $4,661.85 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just unanimously?
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $284,002.08 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment as a conflict with the mayor as the employer.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Present. It's aye. We have a set of minutes for the November 21st, 2011, meeting. Would somebody like to move and second them?
I'd like to move that the minutes from the meeting of Monday, December 5th, be approved.
Any changes, amendments, reconsiderations?
Who seconded that? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Just a comment, as ever, Mrs. Kennedy, they are wonderful.
Thank you.
And reflect, I think, the spirit of the conversation, and everybody's address. Hearing no changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item on the agenda is the Newburyport High School Student Council Representative Newport.
Hi. I really don't have a lot to talk about, but I can't wait until after vacation, so I'll keep it short. There is the lecture concert today in the auditorium. I didn't go, but I heard it was good. So, and all the students are gearing up for the holiday break. We're all excited for the half-day on Friday. And the National Honor Society is selling holiday grams, where we go around to people's classrooms and sing them songs. And you can order, you can order the concert in a large piece. And we do Santa Baby, Baby, It's Cold Outside, All I Want for Christmas Is You, and a couple others. It's fun. That's all.
Thank you. You go on the road.
I would ask superintendent to introduce the next item on the agenda.
It's a pleasure for me to introduce Lauren Sundstrom, to present her project to the school committee and the community, it's called Clothes for Hope. And I've had a chance to meet Lauren several times, and I think she's an extraordinary high school student, and you know, to see the poise that she brings. She has a project that I'd like to see the community get behind. There was a wonderful article, Lynn Hendricks wrote about her in the paper this morning. She was with Lynn Damon on WNTV Radio. So this is the media blitz, so long. Why don't you come right to the, let's, kept my head.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
My chair, I can watch you from the side.
Oh, thank you. Well, my name is Lauren Sundstrom. I am a junior at Newburyport High School. Last summer, I had the opportunity to travel to Ghana, West Africa, for a teen community service trip. And the time that I spent there was primarily focused on teaching and working in the schools of all ages of children. And I was really inspired, excuse me, and astounded by the passion of the children in the school and how much they loved learning. And I was so surprised at the amount of children denied the opportunity for education because they didn't have the means to purchase a $9.00 uniform to attend school. I was also shocked at the facilities in which they were learning and the limited resources that were available to them. Many students didn't have desks or even educators. So I came home and I knew that I wanted to do something to help give more children the opportunity to go to school and to improve their facilities, to give them as much of an opportunity to succeed. I created a fundraiser called Clothes for Hope, and I have been collecting new and gently-used clothing, shoes, and accessories since August. And in March 2012, I will have a large clothing sale at one of the public schools here, and I will sell everything that I collect to local families to give them the opportunity to afford the beautiful clothing for a fraction of their cost. And I will personally deliver all of the funds that are raised to the students in Ghana next summer. So I put together a handout of a letter that explains more in depth my mission and what I hope to accomplish, and a timeline of events that will be taken place. So if you want to go to the house sometimes, then thank you.
You want to tell them what your goal is?
Yes, my goal is to raise $5,000. The total amount that would need to be raised to purchase the desks for students would be close to $1,300. I need to purchase 40 desks to fit their needs, and a desk would seat two children and cost $32.00 each desk. And whatever money that is left over, I hope to give to children to allow them the opportunity to purchase a uniform and go to school at their local public school. I've been working very closely with Dr. Kerbel, and he's been extremely helpful in helping me to bring this to the community. And I've also been working with the Interact Club at Newburyport High School, who are very interested in helping and volunteering. And the community has been so helpful. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me and for all of your support.
Lauren, if anyone has to get ahold of you, or they want to contribute clothes, if they wanted to send you a check, do you have any way they can communicate with you?
Yes, absolutely. I'm always looking for volunteers, and if you have any questions or comments regarding Clothes for Hope, you can email me anytime at lauren@clothesforhope.com, and I will get back to you as soon as possible.
Lauren, I would like you to put a box in City Hall.
Oh, yes.
I think that would be a great idea for all the people who come in and out of City Hall with a poster explaining it, because, you know, we found, we did the tree with, you know, you know, things you pull off to get gifts from people in need, and it was mostly the same hall, boys, and people of the community came and helped. So I think that it would be a great visibility spot for you in terms of raising, raising funds, and providing clothing donations.
Well, thank you so much. I would love to put a box there for donations, and I hope to have bins available in the lobby of all public schools to have a more accessible way to collect donations beginning in the new year.
Is Clothes for Hope a web page yourself?
It's in the, it's in the process of becoming a web page. I have a student at the high school, a friend of mine, who's working on creating a website for me for community service. So he's working on that right now. It should be available soon.
You got to get that up, so people know where to send that check.
Yes.
Is there another question?
I just want to say, I've known Lauren since she was four years old?
Yes.
Yes, four years old. And the amazing thing about this is how one person could send out one email and look at what it has turned into, and it is just so wonderful. I'm super, super proud of you, and I, those children are just blessed, and it's really amazing to see what one person can do.
Thank you.
You know, and so thank you. And I think it's great that we were able to work something like this into it. It's an internship, you said, right?
Yes, yes. I have an internship period, and my wonderful internship teacher, Miss Seino, is here to support me, and she's been helping me with any questions that I may have. So she's been extremely helpful.
Wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is one that is near and very dear to my heart. We're going to ask the folks who have created and sustained the peer mediation program of the Knox Middle School to come up and give us a presentation of what they've been doing. I would invite them to come up. I would move, because I realize I'm blocking this presentation. I'm not sure how they will manage to do it, but they'll talk a little bit about it. Barry Hopping is here as well, a principal, without whom this program wouldn't be happening.
I'd like to thank the committee for inviting Ms. Santos and myself and the mediators to tell you a little bit about our program at Knox Middle School. The peer mediation program is, in a context, our wonderful life skills teachers teaches the basic concepts of nonviolent conflict resolution, and then the mediation program allows kids to come face-to-face and have an opportunity in a safe setting to work out their differences with the trained mediators. And we also have a nonviolent, we have a bullying prevention curriculum and I Interventions Program that deals with less typical conflict. So it really is in a context. But, and because this is a peer-to-peer program, I thought it would be great if we could hear from our students. And I think Annika Gross is going to start us off a little bit.
Hi, I'm Annika Gross, and this is kind of just a PowerPoint on like the gist of what peer mediation is. It talks about like the qualities of mediator, what the process is, like kind of, we used it to recruit the seventh graders this year, and we used it to talk to the fifth graders when they needed, when we introduced the program to them last year. And so this is just kind of a slide on telling you about like what mediation is, and it's just kind of like a way to bring people together peacefully. It's like, if we, we do stuff with conflicts, and we do stuff with conflicts, and it doesn't, we don't do anything with bullying, that's like a different situation. And... And then this is just about why it's important to us and to use... It's just like a way to save friendships for people. So it's really nice to... We realize how important it is for kids to like... It's such a friendship so big in middle school right now. And it's good to keep it safe. And this just talks about the process of mediation and what the steps are. Like you fill out a form. It can either be given by a teacher. And then we welcome the party. We figure out what the story is. And then they come up on their own what the solution will be to their problem. They both agree and sign off on a document saying that they will agree to this. And then we end the session. So this is just what our goal is for mediation. Like, our goal is to like just help the kids have a solution and successfully either end their friendships or like make sure that they're able to peacefully like separate from each other or just build a friendship even stronger than before. And that's just kind of our goal. And then we... So we just want to... We... There's a difference between a conflict and a bullying situation. We only deal with conflicts. So... So bullying is just unfair. It's one-sided. It's one person overpowering another or a group. And a conflict is when one or more person has equal power, and that's what we deal with. That's what mediation is for.
Thank you. And Katie, I'd like to ask Kat here. She's a newly-trained mediator, and she has a story to share with you. Thanks, Kat.
Well, last year I was a party in mediation. And I remember being very like fed up of my feelings getting hurt and the other person's feelings getting hurt and all my friends taking sides. And it was really difficult. And so I talked to my teacher about it, and they suggested peer mediation. And I was really, really nervous when I was going to go to peer mediation. I was... I thought it might make the problem worse. But the second I walked in the room, the mediators were just so like calm and helpful. And it just really relieved all the stress. And the process is so structured that it really just kind of takes away the nerves. It makes you feel like, I know what's going to happen. You're free to say anything. And it was really nice. And now that person that I was fighting with is one of my very good friends who I speak to all the time. And the problem didn't persist. So now I'm a peer mediator because I would like to give back to my school and help kids solve problems in the same safe environment that I was allowed to solve my problems in. So now I'm saving friendships like all my fellow peer mediators. One mediation at a time, so.
I'd also like to introduce Anya McDavid. She's here from the North Shore Mediation Center. And she's done our training. And she's a wonderful resource for us and collaborator. And so Anya?
And I feel very blessed that I was given the opportunity to work with all these young people. And yes, I'm Anya McDavid. I'm the director of youth programs with North Shore Community Mediation Center. And so we provide mediation services all throughout SH County, whether it's in the courts, the community, and my responsibility is in the schools. And so if schools are interested, middle schools and high schools, should we inform a peer mediation program? I come in and I do 20-hour training along with coaches that are mediators in the community. And we then... We coach. It's very interactive. They work very, very hard to gain the skills because the process of mediation is... It's a lot of learning the skills of effective communication and listening. And so often I ask people in their day-to-day life, is how often do you really feel listened to in your day-to-day life? And it's a lot of people will say, you know, I don't really feel listened to because we're not necessarily taught the skills to really listen. And I think these students are really... Through the skills that they're learning to be mediators in their schools, they're learning how to really listen and to understand and take perspective-taking and learn biases and judgments, learning skills that are going to transcend just being mediators in the schools and take them off into their careers. And so, like I said, so part of coming and going to the schools and knowing that budgets are tight, Bruce has also asked me to talk about funding. And so our organization, because of the commitment and the work that we have been doing with Amy for the past couple of years with mediation at Knoc Middle School, we really went out and looked at the community for funding this program, as well as our hope to fund also a program in the high school. And so Danvers Bank, formerly Danvers Bank People, it's now called Peoples United, helped support this training, as well as a donor who chooses to be anonymous, who did a generous donation for Newburyport Middle and High School for these trips. And then also Newburyport Five Cent Savings has provided support in the past, not for this particular year, but in the years prior. So we have a board and also we're a small organization. But when schools and school districts are really committed and they want to have, whether it's a peer mediation program or anything under that gamut of the conflict resolution, because it is a continuum, how I see it, we're in the work of prevention, then we're there. And we are going to work as hard as we can to get some support so we can support your schools.
Great. I'm hoping that if we can step all the way across, can you guys introduce yourselves, nice and loud with your name and your grade?
I'm Kat. I'm on seven gold.
I'm Mrs. Sarah. I'm on seven crimson.
I'm Megan DeZetos. I'm a freshman here at NHS.
I'm Colin, and I'm also a freshman.
I'm Nick Gardner, and I'm in seven gold.
I'm Annika, and I'm Annika Gross. And I am on eight crimson.
I'm Noel Mannan, and I'm on seven gold.
Great. And we asked Erin and Megan to come. What? Hello. Can you guys speak a little bit? Megan and Colin were both mediators when they were at the middle school, and now they're at the high school. And we were kind of wondering what you think about the mediation program in retrospect and just some thoughts that you might have about the skills that you learned.
Okay, well, hi, I'm Megan. And I was formerly a mediator at the Rupert Ray Knoc Middle School. I was a mediator for both seventh and eighth grade. Going into mediation, I didn't really know what to expect. I mean, I knew you learned basic skills of listening and, you know, communication and problem-solving. But in the grand scheme of things, everybody thinks they have them, and they really don't. So having here and coming and learning them and then being able to teach them to the school, it really improved everything because it became more of a peaceful environment. You know, we've never really had a problem with fights in particular. But when they do arise, you need to know how to deal with them. So the peer mediation program gave me a chance to branch out and to help people in my community. Coming into the high school, it's a completely different environment. There's more, you know, you're with people who are kind of legal adults, and it's kind of scary. But, you know, you have to deal with, you know, coming into an environment and dealing with all these different problems that you're faced with. And peer mediation really helped me deal with that, even though technically I'm no longer a mediator. Coming into the school and having those skills behind me really helped me step through the first few months of high school and helped me cope with all the stress and the drama that has been going on. And it's been really a blessing to be part of this program because I think without it, I wouldn't be as sane as I am. So, I guess I'm very sure.
I would just say that, I think what Megan said, when you go to training and you are able to work with professionals from North Shore Mediation, it's definitely a different experience than you expect because it's people who, you know, who have really put their whole life into this. And it's something that they're very passionate about. And also Ms. Fleming and Ms. Santos are very passionate about this. And it's very much becomes in the three days? Two days? Three days? Three days that you train, it's three full days. You're sort of absorbed in the world of mediation. You get to try out mock mediations to practice. And these skills that you acquire, I guess are what you would call people skills, so to speak, just like communication in general. And as Megan said, the... If the peer mediation program were to be brought to the high school, obviously, there would be some parts of it that are different because you're not dealing with the same issues in middle school as you are in high school. But the relevance of the topics and the skills that are acquired when becoming a mediator and when going through a mediation are definitely the same, so.
And to add on to bringing, if we do bring it to the high school, it would be a little different. But just the fact that we are there for people who do need support, who aren't as capable of sharing their feelings with the people that are causing the conflict. We have always been there. We have always been supportive of the people in the Knoc. And to bring that to the high school, I think that would improve greatly because I think everybody likes to feel supported. And sometimes people don't necessarily always feel that. And to have this program here where you can cope with your problems without, you know, without an adult...
An adult in the room.
Yeah, an adult in the room.
You can say it.
Yeah. Without an adult in the room, it does kind of give you a breath of relief that, okay, you know what? It's not going to be blown up out of proportion. And it is a great support to have for everybody.
Thank you. Let's ask if anybody on the school committee has any questions for the team.
As a former mediator myself, I have to say that it's awesome to see this program continue to go. And when I was a freshman, there was actually a very small peer mediation program at the high school. I don't recall doing any mediations for that program. And it really doesn't exist anymore. But it is something I'd really like to see come back. And I can help out with that if you want.
Any other questions? I would like to thank all of you, both the adults and the mediators, for taking the time to come in and talk to us about this project, which is, I think, a terrific project. We're grateful that it exists in the school. I'm grateful to the funders. I'm grateful to the principal, who has encouraged this all along, and teachers and staff who have stepped up to make it happen. And I guess, next stop, high school.
Thank you very much. I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to thank Anya, Anya McDavid, and Amy Fleming, and Arica Antos for their leadership in peer mediation. And I want to thank Principal Barry Hopping, for being able to support them. The kids are terrific. Are they well-spoken?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, critical issues update. And so, and maybe critical sounds a little bit... Maybe it's a quite term I should have used. But nevertheless, it's issues update from what we've had in the last couple of weeks. And so, what I'd like to do is recognize Angela Witt, she's the superintendent of curriculum instruction, to talk about an update on the science base.
Great, thank you. The science department continues to work on best practices in the science department. The last time I came, I outlined the work that was underway. They have met a couple of times since then, focusing on that topic, and particularly labs, having great discussions and sharing their current practices and setting goals for where they're going in the future. One of the things that I had mentioned the last time was that the teachers in the department were interested in conducting some site visits so that they could get out and see how things were being handled at other high schools. And George Masterson, one of the science teachers, took a lead in that and developed an observation tool for them to use when they go out. So it's got some pre-observation information, some things that they'll be looking for during the observation, and writing questions to leave their post-observation conversations with the teachers at the other schools. And that has gotten underway. And my parents, the principal at the high school, and Rob Yeomans, and I are meeting tomorrow with a science consultant to discuss support for the department in their growth plan.
Thank you. Any questions?
Given that we have the NEAS accreditation coming up, has there been any effort to see where we stand relative to meeting, you know, the, I guess, the benchmarks that they're going to ask us about?
You know, there have been. There's a lot of work underway in getting the entire high school prepared for the NEAS review. And the science department, as well as all of the other departments, are working with the same standards around preparing for that.
Any other questions? Sounds like we're moving.
Thank you. A follow-up to the 990 hours. It's both... Last two weeks ago, we heard from the advisor-vice committee. As a follow-up to that presentation, there was a meeting... Well, it was supposed to be a meeting prior to Christmas. But in terms of scheduling, getting everyone's... Schedule coordination is a tough thing to do. So there is an attempt to bring a scheduling committee together. So I'm going to have to get back to you in terms of what's going to happen after that. So I'll probably get back to you. As of right now, I don't know if the group is going to meet this week or not. Substance abuse expulsion rates, this came up in conversation. And I just want to let the committee know, but there have been 13 expulsion hearings. And it should be a concern of, now, we're in the school committee. It should be a concern of the community. And it just happened to catch over the weekend, Fox 25 News, talking about the rise of marijuana use among our teenagers in the state of Massachusetts. And I'm sure there's something to do with the decriminalization of marijuana. Okay, but substance abuse is everywhere. And as I said, the youth speaks for them. You know, you use, you lose. And one of the things that has happened is that there have been, as a result of students making bad choices, the good kids, good kids make bad choices. As a result of making bad choices, the administration has run a large number of expulsion hearings. So what I'm going to do is, as a follow-up, I'll send you the exact numbers as we move forward in terms of how many kids are actually expelled. Most connected to, almost all of it's connected to marijuana use.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. And I don't, I just, I know that a couple of weeks ago, there was a lot of movement afoot to get this addressed through the city council. And I don't know if you can help me, Mayor Holliday. But I was really disappointed that the night of the city council meeting, it was basically moved to the next year, given it's such a serious situation. Is there a reason why that occurred?
I just don't think the council was ready to move on to that. I mean, that is, you know, I mean, they're prerogative in terms of moving it to the next term. I certainly was disappointed that they moved. But I think part of it was the fact that they didn't have a second meeting scheduled this month. They canceled their meeting on the 27th.
Right.
And that, you know, it's in subcommittee, and they needed time to schedule and to, you know, work through the subcommittee issues and have people come and present and talk. And I just don't think they were able to schedule that before the end of the term.
I mean, I just think, you know, the follow-up on what Dr. Kerbel just said, and the numbers kind of speak for themselves at how serious an issue is. And I think it's something that I think trumps scheduling problems. One other question, with respect to some of these kids, and I don't know what... and I don't know what their situations or histories are, but with respect to some of the kids, are there any issues with, I mean, I'm sure there's also kids that maybe aren't going through expulsion hearings but are out of school for periods of times. Is there any issues with follow-up on, you know, being absent 10 days or IEP problems? Or do we see in some of that too as a result of this?
We're seeing some of that too. I would say that Principal, my parent, and Associate Principal Michael Fester have been on top of this. They've been very diligent, keeping communication with Karen Brand, our Director of People's Services, overseas special aid, denying some students who have an IEP that have also faced consequences.
Yeah, I just, I know the the rules are very strict in that area. And I just want to make sure we're phoned to the T.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Are we involving law enforcement as well in these discussions?
Law enforcement involved, yes. But don't forget, we have a memorandum of agreement with the district attorney's office, the police, and the schools.
No, I was just going to point that out as well, as far as memorandum of understanding between the parties regarding substance abuse and chemical health policies within our schools, as well as working very closely with our school resource officer that's both in the high school and the middle school and can respond as needed. So it's a very good working relationship regarding issues that are at hand.
If I can just add to that, I think that we also went to a DH forum on substance abuse and alcohol that was held in the end of September-ish, maybe, beginning of October. There's a breakfast that he does every year and brings really powerful speakers to talk about, you know, some of the issues and impact on development. From there, we followed up with a meeting in the superintendent's office where myself, School Resource Officer Monica Powerd was there, Deidra, the superintendent, and others. And we've just seen members of the Beacon Coalition who are actively been engaged for the past, you know, decade, I guess, at this point in terms of dealing with some of these issues with kids and coming up with, I think, like you'd speak out, I thought that was just a wonderful opportunity for kids to be able to, you know, sort of ask questions of adults. And a lot of issues regarding substance abuse and alcohol and marijuana and the new ordinance that's before the city council were actively discussed with youth in the audience. So I believe that we are on top of these issues. We're trying to, you know, work as a community. We need more help and support within the, you know, the Beacon Coalition, where we're always looking for additional youth and parents to join and help to support the initiatives that they're working on, as well as additional members on the youth commission. These are important issues for our community and for our kids. So, you know, we are continuing to meet fairly regularly on these issues.
I was just going to make a point of clarification and a very quick comment. The legislation that Steve Coe was referring to, this legislation that would create around marijuana use in public, what are, in a sense, open container types of laws that are the same as alcohol. If you use it in public, then you will be subject to a fine. So that's the legislation that has gone into committee and will, I suspect, be acted on early in the year. And the comment that I wanted to make is that I'm hoping to to meet with Dr. Kerbel and everybody named Mike at the high school. Book this room, I think, and have a conversation about how we are approaching this and whether there may be some interesting other ways in which we can, we can take a look at what's happening and have a working meeting. I'm hoping to have that meeting early in the year.
Yeah, just want to add on to what Mayor Holliday had mentioned. In your packet is a parenting today campaign that's sponsored by the Beacon Coalition. So if you take a look at the timeline that is given, it really does tail with the play rent that I'm going to talk about next. So in your, in your packet, there's, I think, a lot of information about what Stephanie Williams and Lisa Zaleski have done in terms of preparing students for rent. There's also a number of opportunities for parents to talk about critical issues, but there is a particular forum that will be run after the production in March. So you can see the timeline, a number of events that are going on. Something new that has come up, and I emailed you about the Rent School Edition cast, not the whole group, but a partial group of students and teachers are going to go on a field trip to New York and we need your permission. We need your permission. I want to go to this, this weekend. This is one of the best field trips I have seen in my career. And I looked it over and I said to Kathy Manning today, I said, this, I would like to go. This is terrific. Because students are involved in workshops with coaches and voice coaches and acting coaches and opportunity to meet members of the Rent Cast and opportunity to be in New York over the weekend. Does anyone need a copy of the field trip form? Does everybody have that? Just going to pass this down to Mrs. Kennedy. And if anyone needs it in the audience, it's one of a couple of copies. And I was looking at the itinerary and the agenda. So the price is $500, which includes all meals except lunch, considering the transportation, breakfast and dinner, the play, and all the coaching and the workshops. This is a pretty good year. And so if there are, if there are any questions, please ask. But I'm really pleased of the preparation that Stephanie, Lisa, and Andy Egmont and Chris Powers from the Coalition are doing together. So there's something to be, something to improve.
I'd like to move the, the school committee approve the overnight trip or the Rent paid to go to New York or further construction and preparation for the play.
For about 9,000 seconds, I think, no, Mrs. Kennedy.
I gave it just now. I think it's your last minute.
Sure.
You're so nice.
Our discussion. Is there any discussion?
I don't know what more there is to say. I think it's an incredible opportunity and world that they were able to, you know, make this kind of connection for their students. I think the work that already has begun, as you walk around, you know, how often do you get an opportunity to be in a play and have this extended, you know, all these other facets of your life in terms of workshops and groups and training and discussions and, you know, interface with, you know, families and therapists who are dealing with these kinds of situations. This is just terrific. I'm really thrilled about this.
I think it's just another gift, a little dedication that we have from the teachers in this, in this district. And the thoughtfulness, I know this is a very, it was controversial at the beginning, and I think the steps that they're taking to show that they are being mindful and thoughtful from an entire community level. Like, it is extremely, we're very fortunate to have this type of program and these type of teachers in the schools.
Any other comments? I might have to support any trip to New York, if you think of any, except to see an aunt. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Posed. Pass it to you, Ann. We now have our next period of public comment. I did see a hand shoot up a minute ago. If you could just let us know what your name is.
Sean Blue, and I'm a children report high school and also a parent community. And regarding the expulsion rate, that's up pretty high. As a teacher in the program, an alternative teacher, definitely a concern. And mine was great to see that was brought up tonight. For what, I think we need to continue to be proactive with it and bring it up tonight as being proactive. It's also not just something that's just community, it's in the community report. It's also statewide that we're having this problem. So it might be interesting to see what other communities are doing and how they're addressing it. And, you know, in fact, they are maybe teaming up with surrounding towns to kind of address it. I know it's not just a problem of new report. I was interested, I was wondering to know if that expulsion, like you said, was 13. Do we have, do you know what last year's was for the whole year? Were you already caught up to last year? I bet you it would be close a couple of months into the year.
Only a couple last year.
So we're already way ahead. Just to give the, you know, the school committee and people an idea of how hot, how much ahead we are, we're already talking to last year at 13 this year, and we're already going to the first, first halfway through the year. It's a serious issue, so. And I think we can be proactive. And I would support any, even to be on some kind of committee or something like that, I'd be glad to help out with something like that.
Come join us at the Beacon Coalition. Beth Tremblay Hall again. And there are, I won't have the numbers right, but there are at least 40 to 50 other communities that are adopting a very similar ordinance to what the Coalition with the, actually, the Youth Council, the kids on the Youth Council have presented to the City Council. So anybody, if anybody wants to help us out and support the kids with the ordinance on marijuana, I'd be happy to let people know when that subcommittee meeting is, if there's a group of us that plan to attend. If you'd like to go, I'm happy to email you and let you know about it because we need that kind of support and understanding in order to get the ordinance passed.
Additional public comment? We have a number of presentations going forward. Hearing none. Moving to the next item on the agenda, which is a conversation about the preschool plan. I'll turn the over to Dr. Kerbel. Who will introduce?
Thank you. I would like to introduce Principal Amy Sullivan and her staff to join us for part two of the move forward with the preschool plan. Last time we were here, Amy's staff made a formal presentation. And so, come on up.
There are some cookies right there.
Oh, thank you. They're doing our cookies down there.
They're not directly on the floor. I mean, they're packed.
Hi, thank you for having me back. Giovanna Foster, who's one of our preschool teachers, is here with us tonight, as well as Diane Simon, another one of the preschool teachers, here for questions that you might have as we go forward. Giovanna is passing out this brief memo of where we are since our last meeting on December 5. And after my last presentation on December 5, proposing a new preschool model for next year, I was asked by the superintendent to meet with the assistant superintendent, Deirdre Farrell, to assess the financial impact of the potential change to the preschool program. Deirdre and I have met. And over the past two weeks, we've looked to assess tuition expenses as well as do some research for similar preschools that have the same student contact hours. We looked at both public and private schools. And based upon that research, we would like to propose the following model for the 2012, 2013 school year. The half-day program, currently, we have two, three, and four days in our half-day and five days in our half-day program. We would like to propose a four-day per week program offered Monday through Thursday. And it would be a half-day preschool program from 8:45 until 11:30 in the morning. We emphasize preschool there because when we came to you on the 5th, we talked about delineating between a child's first year in preschool and their second year in preschool. So preschool program in their first year and more of a pre-kindergarten model in their second year. We talked a great deal about the common core standards and the preparation and research of where we want children to be upon entering kindergarten. So the four-day per week AM program, Monday through Thursday, would meet 8:45 to 11:30 in the morning. That totals 11 contact hours per week. That is an increase of 15 minutes per day. Currently, the students in our half-day program come 8:45 until 11:15. So we would be gaining an additional 15 minutes per day or an additional hour per week in that program. And we'd be looking to offer that AM program to children their first year of preschool or three-year-olds. The other half-day program that we would like to run would be our four-day per week, Monday through Thursday PM program. It would be a pre-kindergarten program. We actually offer this program now, but we would be adding an additional 15 minutes. So children would come in at 12:30 instead of 12:45, and they would leave at 3:15. And that program would be offered to children in their second year of preschool, following the pre-kindergarten model. This year, we have an extended day program in existence. It's its first year. It's been very successful. Our extended day program, which is taught by Ms. Maya Menezes, meets Monday through Friday from 8:45 until 1:15. It's 22 and a half contact hours per week. It's exactly the same as this year. We're looking to run the same program. That program would be offered to four and five-year-olds and potentially some three-year-olds, older three-year-olds, based upon what we may have for enrollment. The last thing that we would like to offer is a full-day program. This program is not in existence currently, but research that we have done shows that many private and public schools do have full-day preschool programs to prepare children for kindergarten. This would be strictly for our oldest preschoolers. So it would be a pre-kindergarten program. It would run from 8:45 in the morning until 3:15 in the afternoon, or 32 and a half contact hours per week. So that's what we would like to propose in terms of our model. This equals five teachers. There would be two teachers that teach the half-day program. They would both have two sections each per week. There would be one teacher that teaches the extended day program, one teacher that enters the full-day program. And what's not reflected here, although we have had it in existence for many years, is a full-day ABA program, which is substantially separate classroom. That would also remain the same, no change there. So that would be our five full-time preschool teachers. When I left here on December 5, we had talked briefly about costs of the program, both how much revenue we could bring in with tuition, as well as what addition of staff would look like. Deirdre and I have sat down to really look at actual salaries. We've done a pretty exhaustive research of both private and public school models and their tuitions versus contact hours per week. And I do have that data if you would like to see it. And we looked at how our rates compared to other programs. So based upon that, we are proposing that the four-day half-day AM program would cost $3,200 annually. That is an increase of $300 a year based upon the current tuition. The four-day PM program would be $3,000 a year. That is an increase of $300 of what they currently pay, although as you can see, it is a $200 savings, only because the children in our PM program are affected by our early release schedule currently. With, if we were to keep with Thursday afternoons, there would be 10 days that those children would not be in school. So thus, we tried to cost out an hourly savings there. On the extended day program that we have this year, next year, we are proposing a $5,500 tuition rate. I will tell you that that is a substantial increase of what families have paid this year. It's $1,250 more. When we went and did our research, that is still actually much cheaper or more on par with what other programs, both public and private, have tuition rates set at for that amount of hours per week, 22 and a half hours. A full-day program, we researched again, tuitions and rates, both public and private, for 32 and a half hours a week. And we would like to propose $7,000 annually for that program. Again, that is on the cheaper side, with most programs being about $10,000 within the range for 32 and a half hours per week. So even with these potential increases in tuition, it is not cost neutral. We tried very hard to make it cost neutral. But if we were to go with this model this evening, it would affect the FY13 budget by about $24,000. by about twenty-four thousand dollar increase to bring on the additional staff.
Any thoughts or questions from the school team?
I would be very interested to see the competitive data if you have that. The other question that I have, maybe, is how does this preschool model, like, how it to, what we have to say about the kindergarten model?
At the kindergarten level, we currently have seven full-day kindergarten classes, which enrolls one hundred and twenty-six students. It is thirty-two and a half hours per week. The kindergarten tuition is thirty-five hundred dollars. But you must remember that half of that is offset by the kindergarten, the full-day kindergarten grant. So families that come into our kindergarten program actually pay half of the cost to run it. So it's exactly a match in terms of hours, and that the full-day preschool, which is not offset by the, by grant, so it would be seven thousand dollars if our families were to pay the full rate. In the half-day program, we have children attend two and a half hours a day. Dr. Kerbel and I have recently spoken about increasing the number of hours or minutes that the half-day program comes, and we're looking at that over the next month or so to see if we might be able to also increase the half-day contact hours per week. And the half-day program is free at the kindergarten level. So if you would like to look at comparisons in this packet, if you were to turn to page four, you can see some tuition comparisons for public school districts. I'd like to draw your attention to Andover, five full days, twenty-five hours per week, is five thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Concord, twenty-two hours per week, and these would be comparable to both our extended day and possibly a full-day program, is six thousand dollars per week. We're proposing fifty-five hundred for about the same amount of time, actually, a little bit more, a half hour more a day. Georgetown offers three full days, eighteen hours a week, at forty-five hundred dollars. It's about four hours difference. Five full days in Georgetown, which is less hour than what we're proposing for our full-day program, is seven thousand six hundred dollars. If you were to take a peek at Newton, twenty-three and a half hours per week, is six thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's really comparable to our extended day, which we're proposing at fifty-five hundred. And then if you were to flip onto the next page, there are some private school comparisons, and I think that these are important to note, because Newburyport families have these options available to them. Bright Horizons, for example, up to six hours daily, twenty-four hours a week, is ten thousand two hundred and forty dollars. It's a great savings, actually, at Bright Horizons. If you go thirty hours a week, it's only four hundred dollars more. The Children's Castle, which we do have many children come into, their actual three-day half-day program is much more expensive than our four-day half-day model, with a couple hours more contact per week. Their three-day, full-day, thirty hours per week, runs, depending upon the age that the children are, between eighty-three hundred dollars a year and ninety-five hundred dollars a year. That's for thirty hours. Knoll Edge, which we also have, a vast majority of children come from, their five full days are thirty hours per week, is nine thousand seven hundred dollars. We're attempting to offer a five-full day at thirty-two and a half hours per week at seven thousand dollars. Quinney Neas, pretty good deal. The Learning Tree in West Newbury, their twelve hours per week, which would be comparable to our half-day program, is thirty-six hundred dollars. We're proposing three thousand and thirty-two hundred. Newbury Port Montessori, thirty hours per week, is ten thousand five hundred. Our Secret Garden, it's a new preschool that has just opened in Newbury, their twenty-hour per week model is seven thousand two hundred dollars. So we still do feel that the public school model is cost-effective, but bringing on a full-day model and taking a relook at our extended day model, we need to be able to charge a tuition that can support the program. So most of these rates are current-year rates, so I don't know if they're going to go up for next year.
Additional thoughts or questions?
I don't mean to get off topic, but kindergarten, have we discussed kindergarten increases yet?
Typically, we register the preschool earlier in the year than the kindergarten. As I said last time, it's always somewhat difficult, because we're not done with the budget process before we have to talk about rates and then start enrolling students. So currently, the kindergarten information evening is set for February first, so we do have some conversations that annually we always have that need to happen between then. And February twenty-ninth is when we will start enrolling kindergarten students for next year. But this was just first on the list of the two models of the press.
Well, I'm just trying to get a big picture of the results.
Mr. Kerbel.
Thanks. A couple of things. I like how you've kind of clarified the new program models. I just wanted to add a detail from the last time we met. So a woman had offered public comment, and I think she was referred to. Unfortunately, I was late coming here tonight. I actually stopped home to get my papers, and my wife had the meeting on TV, said, "You're gonna be late," and I knew I was gonna be late. But someone was, someone was talking about, the person that spoke about, being able to have early care. And I, that kind of hit home with me last time we met, because a service or option like that with early care is really important for, I think, young people, young families needing to get to work, making everything kind of fit. And I actually did a little research locally and online regarding early care. And locally, I talked with a bunch of young families, and several said how much that would attract them to having kids come into the preschool program. When I went online, I found a study that was done by the Legal Momentum Group, which is centered around doing family-based things, but really bringing home the economic drivers involved with those. And they actually did a conference back in 2004, MIT Sloan School of Management, and they talked a lot about the key drivers with respect to not only early childhood education, but having things like early care so that people can keep their jobs, and how the combination of providing that, as well as early childhood education, is a great investment a community can make. And they quoted that for every dollar spent for early childhood education, you can expect a thirteen-dollar return in future, future revenue or future quality. As they put it, "High-quality early childhood education helps prepare young children to succeed in school, become better citizens, they earn more, pay more taxes, and commit fewer crimes." It's a little stretch to go to the crime part, but every dollar invested in early care and education saves taxpayers up to thirteen dollars in future costs. Access to available and affordable choices of early childhood learning program helps working parents fulfill their responsibility. Quality early education is as essential for a productive 21st century workforce as roads or the internet. Investing in it grows the economy. So I think in moving forward, especially as we look at some of the long-term goals of our school district in having a model school, I think it would be important to try to see what we can do in this current cycle, to see if there is any interest for early care. And I know that you and I spoke about having a certain number required, and I would just hope as you move forward with this registration process that we kind of can, for people to see what type of interest there is, so that if we can get an early care program started, it could be something that we, you know, look to develop in the next few years and maybe have just a super, a super enriching, enriched program for when that new school model, you know, is open. So I'd really be in favor of seeing that, trying to tie that into this process as well.
Sure. Well, we did speak about that, and since then, I think what I've discovered is that it's a little bit difficult, and that it's a catch-22 for us, in that we offer our registration evenings, and then we bring Newburyport Youth Services to the registration evenings to see if there is interest in a before-school care, and then we haven't been able to get the numbers. And what, I've only been here for fifteen months, sixteen months, but what I found out in that time is that people are obviously not coming to our registration nights if they don't think it's a model that meets their needs. So I think that there is, you know, a very valid point to that, that we're probably missing out on the people that need the before-school care, and then we're left with just a few families that are hoping for it. So I spoke with Andy Eggermott at Newburyport Youth Services, and what we're hoping to do is this week, sit down, meet, get notices out to families, so that it gives us a good three weeks prior to registration for preschool, which is set on January eleventh, and a couple of good months prior to kindergarten registration, to announce that we're hoping to run with a before-school program, so that then we might be able to attract that interest before our registration dates. And I think that that's been a learning process for me, because when I first came, I came in July of 2010, that was one of the first things that I heard about, is there was no before-school care, and I tried to get it up and running that summer, but we didn't have the numbers to sustain it. And then last year, I made sure that Youth Services was there at our registration night. But again, I feel like people hadn't even considered our program if there wasn't before-school care. And then this year, with all this talk of the new preschool model, it was the first time I heard preschool families actually ask for before-school care. So what we're hoping to do is to get something home this week, really try to market it as best we can, maybe with the help of the Daily News, or maybe a post in the Newburyport Mothers Club. And then I bet that we will have at least ten families, which is about what we need to run the program, to be able to offer it and then set a rate. Newburyport Youth Services isn't able to set a rate narrowly later across the program until they know how many people they're having. So it's just, you know, we don't know where our population is until we register, so it just makes it a little bit more difficult. But I think because of our conversation, you know, we're gonna try to do something slightly differently.
And I think you've done a nice job in terms of, I know that you haven't been here all that long, and in terms of coming on to, I think, what was a kind of a choppy, choppy selection, if you will, and I think you've done a really nice job smoothing that out and heading out to the future. So I don't, you know, I'm pleased with the work you've done.
Just a question, Amy. In the sense of you have families enrolled this year who deliberately selected the program because it met their needs, because it was too hectic. What happens to that family when we move to this new model?
Well, I think that that was a lot of what we heard in the survey, is that there were some families, namely, the families in our two-day model, that were hoping for a three-day model for next year. What we initially had put out in the survey is that we were going to run in the half-day program with four half-days and an additional fifth half-day every other week. And what we heard a lot in players, that people that were hoping for a three-day weren't really ready to make that jump, and they weren't necessarily, they, childcare-wise, like, that half-day every other week wasn't going to work. So we did scale that back to just a four-day model, which we currently have. So I don't think that that's a big jump for some families that were hoping for a three-day to go to a four-day. It still is only eleven hours per week. I think what might be a bigger concern for those families now is that if they were hoping for an AM program for their four-year-olds, we really need to look at our program as a whole, and we feel, for all the reasons of why we proposed this last time, that we need to have children with special needs with us more continuously, and that we really need to have those three-year-olds, or the babies, as we call them, enrolled in the AM program. And it makes more sense to have the pre-kindergarteners enrolled in a PM program. It's actually the exact same model that both Amesbury and Triton use, as well as many other districts locally. So the hope is, is that they might be able to enroll in the half-day and the four-day PM program. You know, I think that if we could meet everyone's needs, of all typical parents, and that, you know, we would certainly do it. It's certainly not meant to upset them or anything, but we're looking to make our program better overall, and we're looking to streamline our services. As you might recall, one of the things that we talked about is how challenging it was to have children in the two-day and the three-day program and try to schedule their therapies and their work with a special needs staff. So yes, I don't think that those families will be happy, but it is a change, and I think sometimes, you know, change is certainly hard. I still think if they enrolled in our four-day PM program, that the tuition is not that different from this year, and if they were able to work that out in their schedules, that they would be very happy with the program that we'll provide for them. But I certainly, I don't think that we entered into the conversations thinking that, you know, we could just make all of our constituents happy. I think what we've tried to do over the past few months is take a look at the demands of our program, and the Common Core standards, and how we can better prepare for that move to the breast, so that, you know, that our itinerant staff and our therapists have more flexibility in terms of meeting the needs of the children and IEPs, and that's really what we're trying to prepare for.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment, Amy. I think you've done a fantastic job. I have never felt so connected to a school as I do. I'm proud of school, put a lot of time into coming there, and you've grabbed on to an idea that's forward-thinking and, you know, not popular with everyone, but you're doing what you feel needs to be done. I think there's a lot to be said about, I think you're doing a great job. I would simply add to Dan's comments by saying that the work that's been done by the whole school and committee in bringing this forward has really been very, very worthwhile, very useful and informative for us.
And I would like to just piggyback on that a little bit, that the idea to propose a new model really came from the teachers and I working together and, you know, realizing some challenges, trying to do some curriculum work with the new Common Core standards, trying to get schedules in place. So although this may have seemed like a surprise to some families in November, it certainly wasn't meant to be that way. It really was, you know, some discussions and trying to get things to work, because we did have a new model this year with our extended day program. We also had a lot of teachers on staff that only work part-time, and it's been very challenging this year to get everyone together and to be able to just meet at a faculty meeting with all the different schedules. It's just not a very collaborative or doesn't feel like there's a lot of continuity to the program. So that's, I think, where the year got started. We realized, you know, the effect of having so many part-time staff and part-time programs and different day programs running, that we're just looking to make it stronger. But it really, you know, I want to emphasize that the teachers have been involved in this discussion all along, and, you know, spoke to central office, and that's really why we're here tonight, and that's why ultimately, we felt it was worthy to come to you and consider registering in January instead of December.
I would ask, Dr. Kerbel, you referred to whether, I don't have my computer in front of me, so I don't know whether we can take action on this tonight? Yes, we're taking action tonight. Do I have the, yeah, I assume the motion would be to approve the recommendation of the committee to make the changes.
I move to approve the proposal before us for the preschool model for the 2012-2013 school year as proposed by Principal Sullivan.
Second.
Along with tuition increases. Excuse me, along with tuition increases.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
I would just like to ask that, since this is a change, if we could get periodic updates as we get into next year, some data usage, any opt- updates as we get into next year, some data usage, any optical issues that you, you know, that kind of information, feedback to us in terms of how the changes has been working?
We could hopefully give you an update as early as mid-January, once we start enrolling students and see where interests lie and, you know, what the population we have coming in looks like, and hopefully it will be sustainable.
My only question was with respect to the new program with the cost of $7,000.
The 32-and-a-half-hour-per-week program?
Yeah, is that, I'm just looking for the old...
Yeah, it's a brand-new program, so we didn't have a tool that has never been mixed since then.
Okay. And so you basically, in terms of the numbers of students, any sense of what you're looking for in terms of numbers for that?
Yes, yes, it's a really good question, actually. We're hoping in our full-day and our extended-day program to enroll up to 15 students with a ratio of five children, up to five children on IEPs, and additional 10 typical children. So that would involve the extended-day and full-day, which we would run in our currently, in our current building, in larger classrooms. The half-day programs, we'd be looking to run in some of our smaller classrooms, because there is, you know, a little inequity there in terms of the size of the rooms. And so for next year, in the half-day program, there would not be over 13 students, and again, up to five students on IEPs in each classroom. But if the new res model goes through and the Brown is a part of that, I could potentially see that going, when the new model goes through. I could see that going up to 15, and I think the reg is you can go up to 16, if I'm not mistaken, Karen, with how many children on IEPs. I just don't want to say that we'll fill it at capacity next year because it's not realistic. We didn't do that this year, and we, you know, there's just not adequate space, I don't feel for that.
So for the five, so that's 15 per class?
15 per class, yep, in the full-day program, 15 per class in the extended-day program, and up to 13 per class in the half-day program. Typically, the AM session or the three-day, the three-year-old classes would be much smaller to begin, because those are the classes that we get students from early intervention enrolling throughout the year. For example, we have three students that we know of with special needs that will be coming to us in the next couple of months, so we always save spots in those, in the youngest group, to grow. So I wouldn't go over 13 per section in the half-day program.
Good. Any other comments? Is this a vote? All in favor? I opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't want to go very far.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm here for kindergarten. Thank you so much.
Bruce, I'd like to thank Amy, Joanna, and Sue for, and all the other members in the committee, both of the ad hoc.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I'd also note that Charlotte Swiggy participated in a lot of this work.
Thank you.
The Little School Committee.
The next page, the next agenda, I mean, I'm going to keep this, it's not going to be a long agenda, it's very short. As I mentioned during the public conversation, Amy and I had a conversation about extending the kindergarten half-day, 15 minutes, 15 minutes, 30 minutes, we took a look at it, at least extending the time. As you heard during public conversation, one of the committee members spoke to the fact that we're increasing the time for pre-kindergarten, yet not having a discussion about kindergarten. So given that, we take a look at, on the background information in terms of the long-term goals that Amy and the ad hoc committee put forth last spring, one of the things, one of the goals had to do with extending kindergarten time. So Deirdre and I need to spend some time doing a cost analysis, taking a look at what the impact is on the budget. We got that through looking at the preschool analysis. Also, we have to take a look at, do we make this work? And Amy and I talked about, if we extend the half-day kindergarten 15 minutes in the morning, we can do that in the afternoon. If we extend it to 30 minutes, all the costs being, can you actually do it? So, I'm sorry, my code is just starting to get to me, but I'm hanging on as I want to be able to speak to the special ed presentation, so I'm sitting a little bit.
Sure. I think that we've always felt, particularly in the half-day kindergarten program, that we really do pack a lot in during that time, but it is a little bit rushed. It's two-and-a-half hours a day. I certainly think that without impact to the budget, we could move, hopefully, to at least adding 15 minutes to each program. We certainly need to take into transportation runs and things like that. It's a little bit stickier at kindergarten because of that. At preschool, we don't transport, other than a very few amount of students that have special needs, but I think that there is a strong possibility to increase the amount of time in the half-day program. Certainly, if we are aiming to get before-school in for preschool, we'll have some information on that for kindergarten as well. You know, if you're a Brown school student, it doesn't matter if you're a preschool kindergartner, you can enroll in the before-school program. You know, there's some other, you know, contractual things with teachers and, you know, how many different specialists and things like that per week, but we definitely want to look at that, and we are certainly cognizant of the fact that we're increasing the amount of time in preschool, and it doesn't make sense that they should necessarily go less in kindergarten. So now that we've finished with some of this, you know, we're on to the next step, and I will be speaking with Deirdre and Mark about the kindergarten model, as well as the kindergarten teachers and parents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Great, thank you.
Should I bother sitting down?
Again.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Special Education Ad hoc Committee, which has been working and has a number of recommendations for us. Are you going to use them?
I will do.
Thank you, Bruce.
Go out to your head and practice.
I think it was around, no, it was last spring, we had a Special Education Ad hoc Committee, and the audience, Kim, Penny, and Beth Troubley Hall, were on the committee, Bruce, Steve, and Dan.
Yes, Cody.
Also contributed some time. It was a lot, committee, the typical ad hoc is, you know, three or four meetings, this ended up being longer, but I want to thank all the ad hoc members who served, and so their names are mentioned in the packet. Karen, thanks for all of your effort.
Thank you.
Karen's going to have a, we talked about this, Karen, by design, you have the packet so you can read, so what she's going to do is give a short presentation and then allow time for questions and answers. Kim and Beth, you know, feel free if you want to come right up and join us.
I'm good, so thank you. Well, while we're waiting for the technology, I just want to thank Beth and Kim for coming tonight and supporting me, and for all of the work you put into the committee. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate the efforts that you took. Program review of special education programs is required through the DESE, and some districts choose to hire a consultant and just have them come in and evaluate your program, and then give the recommendations to the school committee. And I applaud Dr. Kerbel for employing his ad hoc process, because it was transparent. Beth, thank you for your comments at the beginning of the first public comment. We tried to make it transparent, as difficult as that might have been along the way, but we employed members of our community, parents, special ed teachers, regular ed teachers, administrators, some school committee members, and it was a very comprehensive process. So I felt really good with the questions that were brainstormed, the process that we used, and the ultimate recommendations that came from that work.
Is it every second of the night?
Well, it's like Karen getting moved up. The drive is in the morning, but it might be throwing it off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any comments?
So I did send the presentation out to the school committee on Friday. I hope you had a chance to look at it, because I won't spend a lot of time on all of the questions that were generated. I'll spend a little bit of time talking about the process that we took, and then ultimately what our findings were and what the implications for our work will be moving forward. I think that would be the most productive use of our time. What I can tell you is I had the fortunate pleasure, I think, of hosting the DESE the last week of November, for the whole week. They were here for our onsite visit as part of our coordinated program review that takes place every six years, and one of the highlights that I didn't even put on the slide was the ad hoc committee. They applauded us for the process that we took to evaluate the program. So although we won't have our findings for 45 days, they were really appreciative of the process that the ad hoc committee took in the thoroughness in which we evaluate our programs. Hold on, your PowerPoint.
It's a Christmas carol.
Sure, sure.
You read the story.
I love it, by the way. My laptop, my iPhone.
And we first moved to, we moved right across the street. These guys do basketball.
Really is cool.
Of course.
Should be right in the middle, maybe if it's not, ad hoc recommendations.
Okay.
They save the best of luck. Here we go. Okay, do you want to flip me through there? Do you want to flip me through? All right. Let me give you the breaking news. We were supposed to present this two weeks ago at your last school committee meeting, and like I said, the Department of Ed was just exiting on December 1st, and based on our exit interview, we wanted to tweak some of our recommendations and add some of their comments in. So some of the highlights of our exit, I told you they were very impressed with the process we used to evaluate our program using the ad hoc, but also we had three other highlights that they commended us on, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. The first was school-to-school transitions. I think you've heard me speak before. We started the MAPS process, which is a research-based program in the GILL Action Planning System that transitions high-needs special ed students from one building to another or one grade to another, and they were amazed at the process, as spoken to them by parents, principals, and staff members. So they commended us on school-to-school transitions, also on our inclusion implementation efforts. Our whole inclusion initiative is a result of our last program review, where we were cited for being too restrictive and we had too much pull-out. So we went, like gangbusters, we wrote it into our strategic plan, we hired an agency to partner with us, Dr. Susan Craig came on board, and they could not believe the level of professional development, technical assistance, and just kids being included in the life of their community school that they saw when they were here that week visiting. And the third highlight was just the parental involvement. The parents that they interviewed, as well as those who completed the surveys that the Department of Education sends out, certainly spoke to the level of satisfaction that parents in Newburyport are experiencing from the special education program. They spoke to some districts that they go out, the first parents who call or complete the survey are those who have concerns or questions, and they found quite the opposite in Newburyport. They found the first parents to call and complete the surveys were those who had a great satisfaction with the program. So they cited that as another positive for us, so I wanted to bring those to your attention. Thanks. Here's our team, it's real hard to see, but I wanted to give accolades to all of those who participated. It was a lengthy process, like Dr. Kerbel said, we met on several occasions over months to really bring this process to fruition. The charge of the ad hoc committee was to gather information and collect data through five different lenses, through student achievement, programs, our inclusion implementation, professional development, school-to-school transitions, and then our organizational management, and then to provide recommendations to the superintendent about our findings. I'm not going to go through all of the questions, but what we did was gather together and really go through a root cause analysis of what are the concerns in special education, what were the common themes, why were they occurring, what were those common themes, and that's actually what led us to these five different lenses and what we chose to look at the special ed program through. So the next step was to take all of those concerns and really formulate some questions that the committee was looking to solve. So we broke into five groups. So the student achievement group listed these as their guiding questions. Programs, these were their guiding questions, and I'll get this posted on our website for people watching at home, or if you're in the audience and you can't see all of these, I'll have this posted on the special education link to our website, so you can really read this in depth, because there were some great questions that rose out of our root cause analysis. The inclusion implementation efforts, professional development, our school-to-school transitions, and organizational management. So once we formulated all our questions, and that took a few meetings to go through all of the root cause analysis, identify the drivers of those concerns, our information sources were that cross-representation on our committee that I spoke to about, the community members, the parents, the special ed, regular ed, related service, principals, school committee members that made up the committee, the brainstorming that went in, and then we identified key personnel to interview. Rather than sending the committee out to our schools to track down the data, we brought the data to the committee. We scheduled key people to interview and brought them and did like panel interviews at our ad hoc, which we found to be very productive and used our time and resources wisely. Our data collection strategies, I've talked a little bit about, we tried to identify issues and common themes. What were the drivers? What could we work on improving to get at outcomes? That root cause analysis, the five whys. So we had a concern, why was it happening? Well, why was that happening? And really getting down to the root of the problem. And then those interviews of those key personnel. And when we did those interviews, we brought all five groups together. We did that as a body. Through our evaluation process, we constantly reviewed, are we getting the information that we need? If not, who else can we bring in? Do we need to survey teachers, parents? How else can we get at a deeper level of understanding of the concern? Was our team developing trust in the process? Were they buying into it? Did they trust it and ultimately what our staff trusted, so that they would hear and embrace the recommendations that we were going to make? embrace the recommendations that we were going to make? What new questions, if any, were emerging and how were we going to identify resources to answer those? And did we need to make any adjustments along the way? In making sense of our findings in the first lens, the recommendations for student achievement, and I'll go through these one by one, to provide greater access to rigor in classrooms that differentiate instruction. When we really analyzed some of our MCAS data and AYP data, the special ed subgroup was really underachieving. And one of the drivers or one of the root causes we found was that they didn't have access to the rigor in classrooms because they were being pulled out for so many of their services. So that was one of the first recommendations. To build greater capacity for implementing positive behavioral support plans, our staff didn't feel or still don't feel prepared to implement a positive behavioral support program in their classroom. Increasing opportunities for teachers to receive consultation and collaboration from special ed staff, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, our ADA, which is Applied Behavior Analysis, and VCPA, those board-certified behavior analysts. We have all of these resources at our fingertips, but they were operating over here, and our classroom teachers aren't benefiting from all the consultation and collaboration that they can provide. Providing time and training on providing targeted interventions with progress monitoring, the whole RTI process, and we've talked a lot about that at this committee before. Providing programs before or after school to supplement services, try and improve instruction with as much time on task as we can provide. And then sharing those AYP targets for special education with all stakeholders and regular progress monitoring meetings. How close are we getting? How far are we still lapping behind? What more can we do? Are our before and after school programs helping improve reaching that target? And for students not meeting those AYP targets, writing and implementing action plans for And our next category, the recommendations for programs, were to expand language-based programs to Mullen and middle. We have a language-based program at the high school, the language lab program. It has some success. We've brought students back from Landmark and Learning Prep School to participate in that program. We had the similar program at the middle school, but the incidence of students requiring that has diminished somewhat. We're seeing an increase again in students that could benefit from that. We have a few students out of district at Landmark and Learning Prep that if we were able to expand language-based program and bring it down to the Mullen and middle level, we might better be able to meet students' needs. Bringing alternate program options for Mullen kids who need a more functional academic program, some of the kids who that gap is getting much bigger and they need more of a pre-vocational or life skills, functional academic curriculum. Expanding the social-emotional program that we began this year at the Mullen school to the middle school. The students are going to be entering middle school next year, so there's now an increased need to expand that program into the middle school for next year. And then across the board, we heard the need to establish written entrance and exit criteria for our existing programs. A special ed student has a student, I mean, a special ed teacher has a student doesn't know where they fit in. I think this would be a good program, but what do you mean you think? What are the criteria by which that student is appropriate for that program? We've already actually started that work, and when we get to implications, I'll share some of that good work with you. Publishing the continuum of service, the programs that we offer on our website. I had to recently narrate that all out for the DESE for our program review, as well as for the MSBA for the new Bresnahan School, and it dawned on me that it doesn't even exist on our website. So the committee recommended putting it out there, showing people, being proud of what we do have already in place. Under our inclusion implementation efforts, viewing Including Samuel, that PBS documentary that we showed to the entire staff at the conclusion of not this school year, last school year, to the PTO for general education parents' education. We've shown it to our PAC, we've shown it to special ed parents, but we're preaching to the choir. Let's educate our regular ed parents about why inclusion is so important and what it brings to their child's benefit or program at school. Ensuring that teachers have the knowledge and resources to adequately differentiate instruction. If teachers aren't able to meet all the learners in their class, not just the lowest learners, but also those excelling learners, then we're not really meeting all that we can in our program. Providing training and oversight to that tiered model of intervention, which is RTI. Massachusetts is calling it a tiered model of intervention, but it's teaching teachers how to provide those tiers of instruction and then provide the progress monitoring to go with it. Continuing to spur the professional development that we've already provided in our inclusion program for new teachers who come on board so that they can hit the ground running and be caught up and throughout the year, get the training that our veteran teachers have already had. And then building capacity within the district to phase out our inclusion consultant. What do we do when this initiative is over and how do we sustain it and continue the work that we've begun? Creating a parent's network of resources, reference materials, and possible workshops around inclusion. Having our inclusion consultant teach a course to parents, again, educating them about the benefits of inclusion for all students, not just students with disabilities. Under professional development, again, that intensive training in RTI. We've scraped it at the surface. This year, we've really begun and we've scheduled some monthly trainings. Intensive training and differentiated instruction. I was just talking about how important that is to this initiative. Providing training that improves the data analysis skills, progress monitoring, and ongoing formative assessment for our teachers to be able to do this and do this well. And with Angela, I've begun joining her in some of her data team training, and I can say a nice cross-section of teachers are now getting this training. So that's already started too. And then providing time over and over in every lens. We saw teachers need time to collaborate, to share, and plan together. Training teachers to understand and implement positive behavioral support plans. And retraining in the IEP process so that IEPs that are written are of high quality and there's consistency across the district. That was something that we uncovered that we've fallen short of in the last few years. So bringing somebody back in and providing a district-wide training on the IEP process. And then providing inclusion professional development to parents, which I spoke about School-to-school transitions, continuing that MAPS process for high-need students, as well as the Tier Two and One interventions that we've put in place for transitioning all students with disabilities. Establishing a transition timeline in January to identify transition activities for all of those special education students. I just met with our team facilitation leaders last Friday, and we set the date for January. So this is already on the docket. Providing better resources for parents, parents' nights, coffees, inviting parents who are about to go through the transition to meet the team players, to hear about the programs at the next level. Providing opportunities for teachers to have vertical planning meetings throughout the year. So bringing Brown teachers to Bresnahan and having them plan across the spectrum. Bringing Bresnahan teachers to Mullen and having them plan. And then the same with middle and high. And also at our Friday meeting, we set some dates to do that too. So that's also being in progress. Under organizational management, creating an organizational chart of staff and the roles and responsibilities. So we have an adjustment council. We have a school psychologist, but who does what? You know, you have a team facilitation leader, we have special ed teachers. Who does what? Trying to really clarify and make that process black and white. Standardize the method of assessing and reporting. Again, we found inconsistencies, so we really want to tweak that and make that more consistent. Providing parents with a glossary of terms and/or resource library. That came up earlier. They really want to understand, again, those assessment reports better. Examining the consistency of programs from school to school and assigning program oversight. So that if we run an ADA program at Brown, it's the same focus as Bresnahan, and when those students go to Mullen, the expectations are the same, so we have vertical consistency. Practicing learning walks or walkthroughs with administrators and teachers to see that we are all employing inclusionary best practices and making recommendations where we can. Including our curriculum coaches in teacher planning for special ed. They have so many valuable resources for our struggling learners, bringing them to the table to help collaborate with our teachers. And building a culture of inclusion for our students, not theirs and yours, but our students. So our next steps, I'm in the process of scheduling program meetings to develop entrance and exit criteria for existing programs. A week ago Tuesday, I spent three hours with our ABA, VCPAs, and we kicked that off, and it was such a productive meeting. We went through our goals and we made a timeline of where we're going. I've got some of our alternative program staff on the docket for January, so we're going to continue that work and hopefully get to publish some of those entrance and exit criterias. I'd like to establish a subcommittee to develop that organizational chart with me that defines the roles and responsibilities of our special ed staff. Seek and schedule professional development opportunities for these four high-need areas to begin with. RTI, differentiated instruction, the data analysis and progress monitoring, and then that parents workshop on inclusion. Those were the four real big ones that kept coming to the top. Examining our teacher resources for before and after school intervention programs for students that would be in need of further instruction, seeing if we can put some tutoring programs in place so that we can just improve those scores for students with disabilities. And I'd like to establish a subcommittee to set a timeline for adding language-based programming to the Mullen and middle school. And then establishing that transition timeline with key staff in January 2011. And like I said, that's been scheduled, I think it's January 12th, if that's the second Friday in January. I don't know if it's on my calendar right now, but it's scheduled. So improvements that we can expect, if we can deliver some of this, we should see increased student achievement for students with disabilities as well as our general students, if we can improve the ability of teachers to differentiate instruction appropriately. Improve our AYP for students with disabilities. If we're really targeting, are they hitting those targets? And if not, what are we doing about it? More consistency from school to school, from program to program, from IEP to IEP, from classroom to classroom. Improve transition planning. And then increase teaching capacity from professional development. And clearly establish entrance and exit criteria for our programs. Written procedures and protocols for all staff to follow. Ultimately, I'd love to republish the Clipper Manual for Special Education, which is still sitting on my shelf, and it's significantly outdated. It really needs to be improved. But if we can go through these processes and get these things done, we should be able to issue a new procedural manual for all special education staff. And that's it. A lot of work.
Questions, comments from members of the school?
I'd just like to thank Karen and to Beth, and I'm sorry.
Kim.
Kim, thank you. I mean, as representing this, and Cheryl, or I know there was other people who were on this one too, not this one. But this is an amazing assessment, and I so look forward to getting the feedback from the DESE in terms of how, you know, after their, you know, week-long assessment with them both, you know, to, I think, one of the most important is to have the courage to be able to drill down deep into your own programs that you run and to bring all these people together to just accept the kind of constructive criticism and just, you know, rip it apart, build it back together again, and then see where we are for the sake of all the kids who have this program. And it takes a lot of, you know, courage to be able to open up, open up all of your, you know, to be that open to accept that kind of.
When Dr. Kerbel came through with the idea, I honestly said, I'm not going to chair this committee. But then I got so into it, I said, I'm taking this on. Step away.
Really nice, nice, a class of work.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to the organization of the presentation. The way you took us through your thinking process, the results, and finish it with what we can expect. I think you really made it a very clear and very useful presentation, probably one of the more useful presentations I've seen here in the past four years as a school committee that we're graduating for that. Hopefully, we can use this as a standard for future presentations.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
My tremendous, tremendous work. As I only had the opportunity to drop another couple of meetings, but that process you speak of actually unfolded in the meetings as well, in these exercises you went through in the meetings that I attended. You really, you really did a great job achieving that group. And I can't say enough about the work you're doing. You really make it our job easier.
Well, thank you. What I hope to do is be able to set up some kind of progress monitoring where I can identify what our target's going to be. I talked about timelines that are in there that we hope to establish so that I can come regularly as we move through this process and report back to you on how we're doing and if we are stuck wide and how we're going to overcome that.
Yeah, I think it's, I've had a few times to look over this report, and I really, really think it's great. The highlights, you know, they're not just, they're not just minute kind of micro issues, they're really macro issues, really a macro reflection, if you will. School-to-school transitions, the whole inclusion implementation effort, parental involvement. Those are three, if you will, big groups. And so when you can get that type of feedback that you're really hitting, I think it just creates an umbrella or overarching value, if you will. And, you know, that doesn't always come easy in special ed programs. So, you know, I congratulate, you know, you and the entire special ed department. I also like the fact that you've really parceled down the implications for, you know, your next steps of work. It's very clear. Like I said, my first cursory look at this, I said, okay, well, where's the areas that need to get reinvented? You know, where's the re-engineering need to be? It really isn't. It's just really thoughtful things that have worked. And anytime, the other thing I liked in here is anytime you can build capacity into this, you're really strengthening your learning infrastructure of your system. And I hope that one of the things that, besides, you know, AYP groups getting extra help after school, I hope there's a way to get other kids that extra help because I think that's going to help. But it's, you know, we could be a heck of a lot worse off and we're not, and we just don't say thanks for all that.
Thank you.
I think my comment, having sort of participated in a given, was that you really have set, I think, a really nice standard for engaging parents and administrators and teachers, really producing something that I think has a lot of rigor, is very thoughtful, and is very clear and articulate. And to me, it's one of the strong examples of value of the ad hoc groups coming together.
Absolutely, thank you.
The parent involvement is remarkable.
Can I say one thing?
I just, it's very exciting to see the work from the preschool ad hoc, the kindergarten ad hoc, and this, only in that, I mean, you know in such a short period of time, the difference you can make very early on and recognizing those building transitions. I know we're not going to have to deal with that soon. I know we're all going to be in the same building very soon. But I think that that's a very key piece, and it's very exciting to me because in a very short amount of time, you and your team have been able to show what can be done and what can be achieved with that very small subset of students, and what a huge difference it'll make in the long run for all of them. So I, Karen and I always say it, and we are so lucky to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share it with you, and I'll look forward to reporting back, hopefully with some improvements. Great.
I hope this one's mine because it's got my photo on it.
Sorry. Excuse me. I'm one at home.
No problem. Glad to have you.
There are only five more items on the agenda this evening. And an executive committee that we'll meet and then report back out. Be back in a second. So next item on the agenda is the school calendar first reading.
So this is the, thank you Bruce, first reading of the calendar. So I'll keep this simple. The Labor Day, the Labor Day holiday in 2012, September 3rd. So another ad hoc committee. It's including Bruce, and Dominique, and two other parents, Dawn Liberty and Alex Spire. And I spent time, quite a few meetings, going through four drafts of calendar dates we looked at before, starting before Labor Day, starting after Labor Day. We took into consideration a couple of things. We took into consideration a couple of things. One, in terms of chopping up the week with early release days, and we took a look at moving the full professional development day to a different day to see what that looked like. The other thing is that an opportunity, I talked to the union president quite a few times about the calendar. And so we move forward with this draft number four, which is start after Labor Day for teachers and for students, just like you've done, you know, in the past. Move the early release days to Friday, that allow parents to come home and early pick up their children. And then, one of the things we consider, we consider the kind of work that teachers could do on a Friday afternoon versus Thursday afternoon, in my experience. I like having Friday meetings because it's nothing, I may be the only one, but probably Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon, because it's the weekend. And I think if you're engaged, you're engaged, and so if you're going to be tired, you're going to be tired regardless. And teachers aren't tired when they teach children, so they won't be tired when they have a discussion about curriculum instruction and assessment. Move the full professional day to Monday, allow families that long weekend. So what I'd like you to do is take a look at the calendar, you can take a look at when school would end, you can look at the early release days. And one of the things that I should consider, just lightly, is look at Good Friday, okay, experience with having school on Good Friday, and that failed, so we put school, we took school off, put Good Friday back on, as a no school day. So if you look at the calendar, try, I think if you look at just strictly eye appeal, you can see you have less of an interruption of the school week by having, by moving the early release days to Friday.
Bruce, anything else you want to add? No, I think that, I think it's fair to say that the, that the ad hoc committee was weighted towards elementary school parents, who felt very strongly about the Friday release day, felt very strongly about not starting before Labor Day. Parents that kind of dropped in, who were middle school and high school, really liked the idea of starting before Labor Day. So I think that's an issue that's kind of getting moved down the road a little bit while we live with this calendar here, I think for the next year. I don't know if it's a two-year calendar or a one-year. So one-year calendar. And we'll take a little bit more look at that. There were a number of other, there were a number of other thoughts that came up over the course of the conversation that we touched on, but didn't really feel it was our purview. We addressed extended school day, we talked a little about, we talked a little about extended school year. These were, these were parts of the conversations, but ultimately, this is the calendar that we came to consensus with. I've had, personally, I've had mixed experiences with mid-Fridays, Friday afternoon professional days, I think it's worth looking at. I also do think it's worth collecting data on whether absentee rates rise for both students and staff on those Fridays, to measure them from previous years. But this is a calendar that I support.
Well, one thing I wanted to mention, that we polled teachers, and majority of teachers wanted to start after Labor Day. Higher than, higher than I expected, wanted to start before Labor Day. But that was just to come in one day before Labor Day, not have a professional development before Labor. But the majority of teachers voted to start after Labor Day. So as first read, I would say that if you have questions after today, certainly could, certainly email me, and I can bring you up next time.
I know this is kind of silly, because I'm not going to be here for the January meeting, but I will be in the audience for this portion. Can I, could you please provide me with the data on the Good Friday numbers? Because I think one of the things that's getting really difficult for working parents, okay, is in any month where you have two early release days, or two, you know, the holiday, like November, we know November is just like crazy. We removed, remember last year, the year before, we removed a November early release day, because there was not one full week of school in November? I'm curious to see where you're saying the attendance was low on Good Friday.
If I form a district.
I'd like to see our data to see whether or not that that's actually, if we have anything that can, have we always had it off here? Is that just like a given?
Yes.
Because I know there are a lot of districts in the Commonwealth that don't have it off. And I'm not, this is not, I'm not, this is purely from a information gathering type of standpoint. And then the other thing is, and I know Angela, you're not going to like me for this one, but the number of early release days, is that something that was looked at by the, by the ad hoc committee? I know when Kevin first brought these to us, it was, you never want to take one away, because if you take one away, you're never going to get it back. And I understand that, but I also think that there is a time on learning issue that's very relevant, that could one less help in that? Or would it not make an impact? I mean, I know from the, from the parents, from the comments that I've gotten in the last four years, they complain about the June one. I've asked you about that before, you said that's a very important one, your end of the year one. But I think that there is, you know, the Fridays are going to go over better, I think, from working parents. But if they don't work next year, like if you get data that show that either staff or parents, or however, if it doesn't work to your, to Fridays, is it just going to go back to Thursdays? And is the number, I mean, I guess from the, from the ad hoc perspective, I was hoping we had a little bit more, and I'm sorry I couldn't participate, a little more slicing and dicing of the number of the early release days.
What I would add is that part of the problem with reaching 990 with the early release days, since we established the early release days, the amount of required trainings that the state is asking us to do has not decreased. It's actually, the state steady or increased. So this is an opportunity for us to do some of that. Eliminating one early release day is not going to have an appreciable impact on, you know, we're looking for 20 hours for most of the kids, 70% of the kids in high school are looking for 20 hours. Now, there may be some ways to reach that without really impacting the early release days, and there's still some conversations that are going on about that. You know, I know one of the conversations that's going on has to do with whether or not we would have school days on days in which we have midterms and finals. Simply restore school days to those. And that would significantly impact 990 and time on learning. So I personally, my belief is that the, the early release days, I know they're a challenge. One way we responded to the challenges is by moving them to Fridays. I would hesitate to give them, I've given the amount of training, and we just had a wonderful presentation about a ton more training for teachers around special ed and inclusion. And these are the times when.
And it's so not to be confused with not wanting and not believing in professional development. That is just like, I.
There was a lot of conversation, the point I'm trying to point is, there was a lot of conversation. Mark and Angela.
In September 2012, we're going to be rolling out this new teacher evaluation system. And the rubrics, we're going to take the rubrics, the rubric's going to be very challenging. So between the curriculum work that has to happen, and the district, looking at these new rubrics, all the data analysis that will now become very, very important to a lot of people, not that they weren't before, it takes on a whole different set of importance. I think the early release day becomes very valuable. These are very, very valuable. I, looking at this, in my experience, I think this is, this is a great schedule. And that, my experience with Good Friday, we tried Good Friday in Winchester, 70% absenteeism for kids and student, I mean, students and teachers. So my experience with Good Friday is, I mean, I would consider staying away from the Good Friday.
As a personal Hebrew persuasion, I didn't find that I needed to advocate for Young Capore, although I had that when I was growing up along with Good Friday in my school system. Angela, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the idea of the early release days. All of the work that we're doing with the teachers right now requires more teacher collaboration than we ever had, had needed before. And you know what a struggle that is during our workday. We've got, in a one planning period, in a workday, and teachers are expected to accomplish a list a mile long during that one planning period. So the early release days is the opportunity for both horizontal and vertical teacher collaboration. It's absolutely essential to move forward in so much of the work that we're putting forth. So for us to compromise that at this time, when we've established strong professional learning communities with teachers, they know how to collaborate now. They know how to dig deep, they know how to drill into information, they're learning how to use data to inform those conversations. It would be, I think it would be a real detriment. It would be a step backwards to do that.
I listened to Angela, I listened to the concerns about early release days. I listened to the concerns about time on learning, the 990. And then I hear the vice chairman say, "Well, we didn't consider extending the calendar or extending the school day because we didn't think that was in our purview." My question is, if it's not the purview of a schedule committee, whose purview is it? Because that is what we really need to address, people. There's a finite number of hours in the day. The work that is required of us is increasing. We need to expand some way. And we can't just keep putting it off. I think if, if you did talk about it and read some conclusions and recommendations, I'd like to hear them at the next meeting. If you do not have those, those conclusions or recommendations yet, I say the ad hoc committee is.
Well, it was an ad hoc committee to correct you. It was an ad hoc committee to identify a calendar for the next school year. We talked about those subjects, and what emerged from that is the likelihood that another ad hoc should really look at these issues, extended school day, extended school year. So we didn't see it as our purview to do that, although it came up in conversation. We recognize that it needs to be talked about. Nick, you know, as long as I have been here, I have really pressed for more hours, more school year, it's not a question.
That's why it surprises your comments.
Well, I'm, you know, I would suggest maybe that I was not as clear in my comments as I should have been. Purview was to create this school calendar. There was another conversation that needs to happen. I believe that the conversation will happen with another ad hoc group, it would be extensive, colorful, volatile, and I intend to be very much a part of it.
So I'm going to.
I just, you know, having two working parents at home, two kids, trying to juggle school schedules, whatever, I understand the perspective from professional development teachers moving to Friday, but have we polled enough parents to know that this is better than I'm just not convinced that this is, this is going to be helpful to new families. And I, I mean, people are used to Thursdays, maybe they've adjusted their work schedules, you know, when they have kids working, and then all of a sudden now come September, you're saying, now you've got to make another change again and shift to Fridays. And I'm just worried about that. I would like, before I'm ready to vote on this, I would like at least some type of feedback from the parent, from parents of the committee.
I heard last year when we were going through the switch to make it after Labor Day, I heard from a lot of parents, love Friday, doing the early releases on Friday, so you could basically have some more family time to do things, date trips, whatever, but that, you know.
I can send you four years' worth of emails that say, "Couldn't you just move them to Fridays?" Just because from the work day perspective, if you're going to work from home, if you have one day a week that you can work from home, sometimes it's easier to take a Friday, and then at least you're home and you don't have to deal with Friday traffic. But I do have, I do have emails from at least 20 people within the last four years of the VASAP. That's not a high percentage, but it's.
Could we post something on the website?
Sure.
Do a quick, you know, which day would you prefer? I'm just, I really feel uncomfortable, this is a major change in the calendar. You know, it's one thing because everyone's used to bouncing Labor Day before, after, but this is, you know, and I just would like a little more data before I feel comfortable voting on this.
Especially middle and secondary parents, I think it would be important to get more information from them.
Anecdotally, anecdotally, the feedback that we've gotten is that elementary school parents like the idea of Friday. Non elementary school parents, middle school, high school parents preferred a non-Friday. So, you know, it's.
Please, everyone, I certainly understand that, but I just feel that it would be nice to have a little more data to support this change, that's all.
In relation to what Dawn is saying, in conversations I had with, with Dr. Kerbel, and I don't think it's come up here, this was, I thought we were presenting this as a pilot and a proposal, and that I'd like to see some data kept on if we go with this calendar and we switch to a Friday early release day, and if this is a pilot, what kinds of data are we going to be collecting? You know, to help us to decide whether this is a better move or not. And if it is a pilot, then are we looking at, if this doesn't work, another change next year? So I think, I support the fact that Friday works for a lot of ways, if it works for parents and families, but the most important thing for us, for early release, is, is the work that is being done, or will be being done on a Friday. And I understand, Dr. Kerbel, you know, when you were talking about, you know, having Mondays and Fridays, and then having the chunk of instruction during the week. But I guess I'd like to see some, some collection for Fridays, other increased student absences because they're going to take the whole day off instead of just the afternoon off. Are teachers dedicated to doing this kind of work on a Friday afternoon?
And I will tell you that I believe that every single teacher in this district teaches my kid on Friday just as well as they teach them on a Thursday, a Wednesday, or Tuesday. And that's what I expect as a parent. So I think, I think that is, if, if, if we're worried about them not liking the changing date, maybe that's something to talk about. But the expectation of how they would be in terms of being ready to work and get their stuff done, I mean, that's what they're there on Friday for anyway, right? I mean.
Yeah, I would just respond to that from a little different perspective. Our teachers are professionals, they're going to give their best shot, whether it's Friday or whether it's birthday. However, the part that's going to be difficult on Friday, I think, is that transition. What makes it different from having a day of teaching on Friday when you have an early release is you release the students, you transition from that, it's a little different lunch, you regroup, you rethink, you have to, you know, you're going into a different mode for that afternoon. We'll see how it goes. That's my concern. I think when you keep a momentum going all day at the end of the week. I think when you keep a momentum going all day at the end of the week, that's right. And, but you're going to break that momentum, you have to start a new momentum on a Friday afternoon. So, we'll see. You know, I'm hoping that that will be successful. But I think that's where the difference is. I know our teachers will give it their best shot. You know, nobody is going to say, oh, it's Friday afternoon, I'm done though, you know, I don't have the energy. But I think it's harder at the end of your week. They're thinking about closing out their week and getting ready for the next week on Friday afternoon. And so, to stop your teaching day, rethink about regrouping for professional development, and then closing out your week, maybe the challenge.
I'm sure, did you poll...
Yeah, I was going to say, did we talk to the...
Did you send out a survey or what? How did you get teacher input?
The executive board talked about all these issues and voted to support draft number four. They didn't see the issues, they didn't see any of the issues that have been talked about here. They did agree with Angela. They are professionals, they show up the work, they do a good job, do a great job, and they finished the week's run as we expected.
Right, so who's going to launch the survey?
I'll take it. This is the first one. The MSBA up... I'll turn over to Deidre and Dan.
Tomorrow and Wednesday, we'll be at MSBA. Purpose of tomorrow's meeting is for the NOC-Mullen project. As reported to you, we had seven respondents from architects for the NOC-Mullen project. The selection subcommittee of the school building committee met to review those proposals and rank those proposals. The designer selection panel, which is tomorrow, Newburyport has three votes, as reported to you, the three votes. Mayor Holliday, Deirdre Farrell, and Steve Burgholm are the three votes. They get twelve. The ranking of the seven respondents was unanimous. The top architect from the selection committee was unanimous. The second one behind wasn't unanimous, but it was a close second. And then the others were sporadic as far as support, some garnering, no support at all. Tomorrow, the process will be at ten fifty is the Newburyport meeting. It's a forty, forty-five minute meeting where we will review with the designer selection panel, the respondents, the respondent that Newburyport would prefer. And then there's a series of votes and conversations regarding those votes as far as that's concerned. So, hopefully, at the end of this meeting tomorrow, it will result in a preferred architect that was ranked, again, by the selection committee as their first candidate, if you will. On Wednesday, we go back into MSBA for the purposes of the NOC, I'm sorry, the Bresnahan Model School project. And we are at a point where we are now understanding the size of this building compared to the guidelines that MSBA has, where over guideline as far as square footage is concerned, and now we want to work with them justifying the spaces that we've requested that this building contained. We also have to prepare for them and present to them on Wednesday our educational program summary as to justification of the spaces that we're requesting on the floor plans. That meeting, again, is on Wednesday. So, it's been busy between both projects. We've been in and out of Boston for the last few weeks, about four times, and that work will continue. Tony Pooter from Hury International, your OPM, is also attending the meeting Tuesday and also attending the meeting Wednesday. He's actually going in at eight thirty tomorrow morning because two of the architects that are ranked one and two from the subcommittee are being interviewed by another district. So, he wants to hear those interviews. When we arrive at MSBA, he's going to break from those meetings. We're going to see if we can find a conference room or something and just debrief as to what he saw during the morning interviews. I didn't know, Dan, if you wanted to jump in regarding the work...
What's that?
Regarding the work that the selection panel did.
Yeah, no, the proposals were, there were several proposals that I can't speak to because there's no reason to.
Reason? Between the lines.
We do have some very good selections and very hopeful that they're not scooped up. Architects that suggested Play-Doh and all is probably around.
Do we have first and second?
Yes.
Anything about to add?
Yes, I would. In addition, I had requested a meeting with Treasurer Grossman because I was concerned that verbally, we got the indication that it was okay to do one vote, you know, one dead exclusion. And then it was followed by a pretty detailed email on all the reasons why we can't do that. So, it was very frustrating. So, I, today, Deirdre met with me and Steve Bedore, Senator Bedore, and Mike Costello, Representative Costello, and the new interim director of MSBA, Jack McCarthy, and two other associates. And we really laid it out for them that, yes, we know that we agreed to come into this process with two separate tracks for model school, the accelerated process, and then, you know, full design for the renovation and addition project for NOC-Mullen. However, as you look at the timelines, you know, it's leading us to a path where we would have to hold a second special election in October, right around a federal primary and a federal, you know, that, general election in November. And we all can talk about what we anticipate. That election's going to be difficult. It's going to be partisan. It's going to be focused on what's happening in DC. It's not going to be focused on Newburyport. So, we don't want to do that. We don't want to have to do, plus the cost. You know, right now, this year, we didn't do preliminary because there were no races that exceeded, you know, the numbers, so we didn't have to do a preliminary. We have the money for this year to do an election. So, you know, it's not going to be an added burden to our budget, and I would just like to do one budget before the end, one vote before the end of the fiscal year. They really listened. They really, I have to say, they listened today to our concerns. You know, we've come this far. You see, you know, like, they talked about how a lot of schools are, you know, don't meet timelines, and they're black, and I said, we're jumping. You know, you say jump, we say how high. You know, we're following this process to the best of our ability. And, you know, our school building committee, Deirdre, Stephen, you know, Mark, I mean, we are working very hard to, you know, move these projects forward and get them, you know, to this vote. So, they have to go back to their board and, because they voted in terms of, you know, what they agreed in terms of those two projects and timelines. But they hear us. They're hearing what our concerns are. And they said, so could we move it out a little bit? Could we then take the vote maybe, you know, in May or early June as opposed to the end of April? We were sort of shooting for April twenty-fourth, which is the anniversary of the opening of the Belleville School. We thought that it was, you know, kind of a history there, so, you know. Anyway, so, we're working on that piece, and we also talked about some of the, you know, they need all of our plans for the new model school for the Bres on February second for a meeting March twenty-eighth. And we lose all that time in between, you know, in terms of our being able to, you know, I mean, this is a huge project. You don't want to miss anything. You don't want to make mistakes. And so, we're, but, you know, I think, you know, we're managing it well. So, we sort of said that they should meet more often so that, you know, they wouldn't have to ask us for a plan so early. So, as I said, I'm not afraid to push back. Saw Treasurer Grossman now oversees this twice last week, and he immediately came up and said, I understand your issues, I'm right on top of them, and, you know, we'll work with you there. So, you know, so, it's all good. It's all good. I mean, I felt very encouraged as we left that meeting today. The other piece is that the school building community group, which is made up of the three teams with, you know, media, the campaign, and marketing materials and all of that, have scheduled their first, their kickoff on January eighteenth. So, that was the request for change in school content. So... We have a meeting with the neighbors that we are putting together. I've started to get a couple of emails and inquiries regarding some people who live around Bresnahan, because they're not hearing all the right information at this point. So, it makes sense for us to reach out to all the butters sooner than later to make sure that they understand where we are. So, at Bresnahan School, seven o'clock, January eleventh. We're sending out a letter tomorrow to all of the butters on Murphy, Norman, North Atkinson, Myrtle, and Hyde. So, the label's already done, ready, so we're going to send it out tomorrow. So, I would encourage all of you to attend if possible so that we can, you know, present where we are to date with, you know, the Bresnahan School model.
What time does that need to be?
Seven o'clock.
At Bresnahan.
At Bresnahan.
On the seventeenth?
Yeah.
The eleventh.
The eleventh, at seven o'clock. The eighteenth is to be determined place, but that's where we're going to be doing the kickoff for the campaign.
The only other thing that I would add to the meeting that we had today is the model school program caps the reimbursement for architectural and engineering fees, A&amp;E fees, and they do so in their thinking that the building's already built. Well, the building that was built was built four fifty. We need it for seven sixty. The architects are spending a lot of time on schematic design. And they are also paying the architect for their second iteration of the East Fairhaven School more than the four percent they're saying they're capping. So, we're asking them for consideration, the same consideration, basically, in providing us with more of a reimbursement than the four percent, which is statutory, but they are overriding that in other model school programs and commonwealth. That will provide more money reimbursement to the district, which will provide more money to the actual project itself.
We have the superintendent's report about the two assistant superintendents.
I'm going to keep mine very brief, and certainly not second big, I think I'll hold off until January third. One of the considerations that Mayor Holliday mentioned tonight, change of the date of the school committee from January seventeenth, which is on a Tuesday, to another night because we were having the bowling forum, we're going to Orlando, which is one of the state universities. So, the January eighteenth, you just mentioned that was a...
It's going to be...
Yeah. So, possibly moving the seven, January seventeenth to the following Monday, which would be January twenty-third.
So, you got a whole week. How many firsts and thirties, first and last? Five? So, that would work. That would work.
That would work.
Because that's not the city council meeting, right?
So, first, well, what are they going to do on the second? January second, January thirty?
January second is a meeting. It's officially, it's a school committee meeting, too.
Right.
On the second.
So, January, they wouldn't meet again until January thirtieth?
No. They would meet on the ninth, right?
So, the ninth and the thirtieth. So, you could meet the twenty-third, which is...
Yes.
Other than that, just my only, Stephanie, best wishes to you. It was a pleasure working with you. You always were so supportive and positive, but now I'm just there. I know I can always call you, so best wishes to you.
Thank you.
And really appreciate the community, so best wishes to the community. People are very supportive, especially when I walk around with my wife. I think you like talking to her more, so they're talking to me. But I, best wishes to the community, and I appreciate all the support. The school's here for me personally. Thank you.
Assistant superintendent.
Again, most of it, my life has been MSBA for the past couple of weeks, particularly getting us to the MSBA DSP tomorrow, which is very, very exciting. We are moving along with budget behind, quite frankly, and quite honestly with you, and I'm just starting actually to, once I get through Thursday or Tuesday and Wednesday, hopefully I can, you know, give that more of a focus.
Are we going to follow through on meetings, doing budget workshop meetings?
At appointments, yes.
Angela?
Yeah, I just was going to tell you how good our data team training was on the twelfth and thirteenth. We had teacher representation from all of the schools. All of the school administrators attended for at least a portion of the training. I just kept thinking, while Karen was making her presentation around the recommendations, it's the work that we're doing around professional development is so well along. So, the very thing that needs to happen around really drilling into data and getting to the root cause of the issues is the very work that we're doing in this data training. I think people were highly motivated by it. They were all really engaged. It was, it was a very good day. I heard teachers saying things that I hadn't looked at this from this perspective before. It makes me want more information. You know, I need this kind of data in other context areas. So, it's really, it's very good, and I think it will be a very powerful process. The training is intense. It's a very full day. It goes from eight to three, and you're examining data from eight to three. So, it's a, it's intensive training, but I think it's going to pay off.
I just wanted to say thank you for sending the handout to us. I'm not walking us through it. No, but I appreciate, I really do appreciate the handout and all the detail, and you could sense, you know, the, just the continuity and, you know, it was, it looked like a very good training. Thank you.
And Angela, anecdotally, I don't know if you were here during public this conversation at the beginning, but I actually got an opportunity during a conference to kind of go through a GME with one of the math teachers. I was, the excitement on his face as to how specific you can drill down. Like, it's not just fractions. It's subtraction of fractions. And it, you know what I mean? Like, that was really, you could see the buzz. Like, he was really excited about it. It was great to see.
That's great.
It was like another way for them to sit down and show you, well, here's where they were there, and then look at this, and it was very, very, it really was like very engaging from a parental perspective, too.
I think it will be motivating for both teachers and parents to have, to know their learners better. That's where it's taking us off.
Sorry, I apologize. In your packet, there was an administrative policy statement regarding concussion policy. This is work that Bev Hines-Lacy and I are leading with John Delanis in the district regarding a new Department of Public Health requirement for school districts to have this kind of a statement from an administrative standpoint, but that there's also more of a plan and in-depth training, more of a plan to, how are you going to address students that have concussions, not only from an athletic perspective and being returned to the field, but what are their academic requirements? What are their academic needs? And it's not just for athletes. We get kids in recess and in playgrounds and in hallways, and, and, and our skiing in winter and things like that. So, how are we going to address both athletes and non-athletes regarding returning to play and returning to athletics in the classroom? So, the subcommittee that includes Dr. Susan Athlons has been working on that policy development. This statement has to be submitted to the Department of Public Health by January first, and then the formal policy with the forms and how we're going to work with students is March thirty-first. So, this is a first reading, but it's an administrative policy for your information.
Thank you. I need a, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes you discussed. I need a, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation and contract negotiations as an act of faith. Will we be coming out of executive session, take public vote?
Could you say that again?
I need a motion. I need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing potential litigation and contract negotiations, and we expect to be coming out of executive session to take the vote. So move.
Second.
Go ahead, call vote, please.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Decanta?
Yes.
Ms. Kiu?
Yes.
Back in session. And I would like to announce that after a great deal of deliberation, we are offering Dr. Kerbel, who has been here now for 18 months, a raise of 1%, which amounts to $1,650. And we are placing $3,350 into a tax center annuity for him. We need to take a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Cole?
Actually, it should be a motion. So move.
Second.
Great.
Oh, you second. You do it.
Stephanie's second.
Stephanie did it.
This is her last meeting.
That's right. We'd be all over the votes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Definitely.
Mr. Menon?
Absolutely.
Mayor Holliday?
100% support of.
Ms. Weaver?
Positively.
Mr. Decanta?
She.
Ms. Kiu?
Yes.
Oh, oh.
I moved to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead. Yeah, second.
Stephanie.